Good evening and thank all of you for being here today. We're here to file a work session today. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Henderson, if you will, open us up with a word of prayer, please.
Whatever one about it is, dear and Father, once again, we're coming forward. We thank you from our hearts. We're coming forward just to ask you to just look upon us and have us do what you want us to, which is put is pleasing in your sight. This we pray in our Lord and Savior's Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Edwards, would you lead us with our pledge, please? Again, thank all of you so much for being here today. We're here today to discuss the proposed 911 center. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished board members and citizens and colleagues that are here today. Today, we are here to discuss the possibility of a 911 building project. People that will come before this distinguished board today are as follows: Trudy Henry, the Director of the City of Covington E911; I believe the Finance Director is here today also, Randy Smith; and also, our Finance Director, Ms. Brittany White. Trudy will give us an overview of the reason why. Also, my distinguished colleague, the City Manager, Mr. Trey Thomas, is here, as well with Madam Mayor of the City of Covington. So, at this time, I'll yield my time to Ms. Henry, and the presentation will start at that point.
Thank you, sir.
Trudy, if you would, please come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman.
Hello.
Hope you're doing okay. So, I'm here tonight just to let y'all know kind of why we need a 911 center. We moved into our location now, I guess about four and a half years ago. When we moved into the location, it was planned for us to share some of the space with the firemen, be in the break room, dayroom, have a place for the dispatchers to go to get away from the radio and the consoles. We moved into that building in October of 2019, and as we all know, COVID hit in March of 2020. And ironically, Station 22, where we are located at, was the first people in Newton County exposed to a case of COVID. At that point, we had to basically isolate ourselves, and all we had then was a radio room, two bathrooms, and basically one office. We operate on 12-hour schedules, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The dispatchers are in a very small area for 12 hours. They work during inclement weather, during tornadoes, during thunderstorms. They're asked to stay over, come in early. You know, we don't get the opportunity to take off snow days like other employees. You know, if there's an emergency, we're at work. During COVID, we were all at work. We operated out of two locations at that time. So, we do not have a break room that allows our employees to step away from the consoles. We have a small room that we built that does, that we do have a sink, and we have a refrigerator and a microwave. And that's their only place to go prep their food, but they have to go back to their consoles to have a chair to sit in. We don't have any, we don't even have an extra table anywhere for them to go sit at now because we had to build offices. We'd like to just provide them, you know, a place to get up and go eat, just more room to kind of stretch out. They are there long hours. We do not have a space to facilitate any type of critical incidents, stress debriefings. I know, we've had a couple of officer involved shootings and things like that, and we don't have a place to take our employees, to talk to them in times like that. We depend on other agencies to be able to go to their facilities, just to have a quiet room to have conversations. I have seen the Communications Office, I have sent the Communications Officer home after these incidents because they're unable, we're not able to provide them with the debriefing that they need. So, they can't get away from the radio and do those type things where we are right now. So, it's, it's just hard. We don't have a dedicated space to debriefing. We pretty much just kind of stand in a circle, brief, and then put them on the radios. We don't have anywhere to go sit and talk, do any kind of, you know, training before they take a console. I have myself and my IT person share an office space, and then I have four other employees that share a room that is their offices. So, we don't have any, my team leaders are basically in the radio room. They don't have another computer to go do quality assurance or anything that has to be taken care of as a shift supervisor. So, there's nowhere to talk to the employees. The team leaders have to take them outside or stand in the hallway, right in the bathrooms, to counsel or debrief or, you know, any kind of conversations they have to have. Disciplinary, you know, there's just not a private, there's no private place in our building. Can't handle disciplinary actions, you know, phone calls. If you, you know, if I have a phone call, sometimes I have to get up and go out to my car, like today with it raining. I had to go sit in the car, just talk on the phone to conduct business, just to have a quiet and private place to, to talk to people. I've put people in my car before, just to have a private place to talk to them. You can't always stand outside. Sometimes it's cold, sometimes it's hot. Vendors, when we have vendors come into the building, we don't have anywhere to meet with them. We basically stand right outside where the bathrooms are to conduct business with our phone providers, radio providers. And building security is a big thing for us. Where we're located right now, we don't have anywhere where we can bring in the public and talk to them about open records or, you know, incident that occurred or whatever. There's nowhere to bring them inside our facility that doesn't give them access to, you know, confidential information. So, I, yesterday, a lady come walking in the front of the bay at the fire station. She wanted open records. The Sheriff's Department had sent her over there. So, I stand, I stood out there in the bay and talked to her about her open records, which, you know, she didn't understand why she couldn't go into the 911 center. And, you know, it's hard to explain to the citizens why they can't step inside. But, security is a big thing. You know, we have to keep our employees safe. We have to keep the phone lines safe, just everything in there. GCIC rules and regulations prevents us from having people inside the building. You know, some of the major things that we have faced in the building is water. The building that we're in was not designed to have equipment where it is, and all those water pipes in the ceiling, we've had several leaks. We've had to replace the equipment due to the water leaks. We have a lot of equipment, y'all know that. The bathrooms, we have two toilets for 33 employees. We roughly have 12 employees there at a time, sharing two restrooms. I pay a plumber monthly to come out and clean the lines, just because it backs up. The past three days has been continuous backups. We've had the maintenance crews over there. Probably, let's see, they were over there once today, two times yesterday, you know, putting that little snaky thing down the toilets and pulling up, all kinds of fun stuff. But, that's just the past two days. And, I mean, that is like a continuous problem for us, just because, I mean, two toilets doesn't support that load. In the event of an emergency, inclement weather, snow, you know, employees are required to come in. If they were, you know, sometimes it's easier just to stay and get some sleep there. We don't have anywhere for them to sleep in this new building. There's no showers or nowhere for them to, you know, get ready if they were to need to. I mean, without all that being said, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of issues. I mean, we have a nice radio room. It was really nice when we moved in. We've had to add office space. We had to add the break room, and it's just kind of closed in on them, and it's getting tight. I guess my plan is to build and maintain a 911 center that will stand, withstand future growth, future demands, and be a permanent location for the 911 center. I've been here 30 years, and we're in our third building, and none of them ever has been promised to be a forever building. And if we could just get something that we can make and, you know, withstand the test of time, would be great. So, all I'm asking at this point is if we could just go out for RFQ and kind of see, you know, what the needs are. As you can see up on the screen, the proposed location would be down where the tower sites are. The one in the picture, that's the prime site. That's the city site that has been there since 1994. And Harmony, which is the new county site for the new Public Safety Radio System, is just right above the current tower there, just north, over to the right just a little bit. And we would like to build the 911 center right in that, in that area between those two. The Water Authority, I've talked to Mr. Hopkins, and they're in agreement to, you know, let us use that land. They did have a few requests. I think they sent them over to Mr. Cooper. And it's really nothing, I guess, outside the scope of what we would more than likely do. When we build a 911 center there, they want a gate. They obviously want access to the property because it's land apps. I think a D cell lane and acceleration lane at 36. So, just some things like that. But, we have been talking to them, and we do have an agreement kind of worked out that just needs to be finalized. And then, the proposed funding for the 911 center would be out of my 10% that is set aside when we receive our 911 fees. Brittany and Randy and White can explain this a little bit better, but if you're looking at, looking at 4.5 million, 30-year bond at a 3.5% rate, the payment would, well, our revenues for 2023 were the $2,434,490. They are projected, no... Oh, I don't know, Randy.
Yeah, so, so, we retain that 10% of that revenue, which is, which is meant to pay for capital expenditures. So, if the new 911 building costs $4,500,000, then we would have enough capital reserve amount to pay the debt service on it.
So, the city and the county would not have to contribute additional funding unless there were additional capital items needed. I think that's kind of the key. We would use that 10% set aside to pay for the, for the building. Again, those we budgeted for and paid by the city-county split per the IGA. And Randy and Brittany have talked about the Facilities Authority could issue the bond, and the County Facility Authority has been thought to be the best candidate. I think they can get a better rate. And then possibly, to pay it off later, to avoid some of the fees, we could look at SPOSS, the next SPOSS, I think in 2029, to pay off the building. And then these are just some proposed drawings where we have talked. There would be joint ownership of the building. And during the bond repayment period, the facility would be owned by the county's Facility Authority and leased to the city and the county. When the bonds are retired, and the property would be deeded to the city and the county, and IGA between the city and the county, and the lease from the authority to the city and county would be required. That's just kind of, that's kind of where we're at. And I'm just asking for y'all's blessing. My employees do a hard job, and they deserve a, a building to support that job. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. Any questions, guys? Commissioner Cowan.
The 911 Center has always been treated like a, excuse the euphemism here, but a redhead's stepchild. It's been, I guess, we started in 88, 87, somewhere around there?
Eighty-eight.
Anyway, crammed them into a little bitty building over there off of Industrial Drive. They operated there until we put them into Cousins School, which was not designed for 911 Center. What Newton County deserves, and the people here deserve, a functioning 911 center that is useful and can be added on to. Our demand for services is going to continue to go up. I think that it's a critical thing that we gotta have. I don't know about the financing and everything. I know Randy Smith is very smart on how to do all this stuff. I have every bit of confidence in him. And I think it's a great thing to, to put this on the table. This is, this is a city-owned land, or is it county-owned land?
It's actually, the land is actually owned by the Newton County Water Authority and the city.
Owned by who?
It's owned by the Water Authority, and they have some kind of agreement with the city to where the city operates the...
It's government land. We ain't got to buy it.
Right. Yes, there's no...
So, I think it's critical now to put that, put that out there, because we really gonna have, we really need it. We should need it 10 years ago. And when we moved them to the Fire Department, that was just a, not a mistake, but it was just, it was too small of a building to really cram all that operation in. And we really need to get a new building built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. You, where's, where is this property located? I've just, just got here and I just trying to think exactly where's the property at.
Where is the property we're proposing?
Yes, ma'am.
It's down on Highway 36, just south of the Dollar General, right behind, like, Harmony Baptist Church, or it used to be Harmony Baptist Church. I think it has a new name now, where the prime, where the tower is, at Land Apps.
Okay, I got you. I got you. Got you. So, so I just, just want to ask, you know, I remember when we moved it to Cousins, and then, you know, it was a whole lot of issues there, and then we moved in that, that particular building. I, I believe this is a great idea, and I think we should work together so that we can build this, so we can build a good building that the county can be proud of. And that, you know, and I, I don't know if I'd build, but would you complete it, but I think that it should have one ownership. I think it, we need to look at deed and over to, once it's completed and built, built, deed over to the City of Covington. So, I'm off of it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Trudy. I'm, what I'm hearing is space.
Yes.
And our current location, it was a, it sounds like a stopgap measure. What, what I would like to do is, is understand from a county perspective, our funding options, and, and have a powwow with Mr. Cooper and see how he feels about it. Maybe that's why we're here tonight. But, I, I, I do, I do understand the importance of making sure this is a facility that can accommodate a growing and changing community. So, maybe now's the type, right time to talk about that, understand that, discuss it, and get it done. So, I will lend my support to this if, if at all possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Cooper?
From an economic feasibility standpoint, Brittany and I are still talking through some of those various options, and she is working with Mr. Smith now.
Okay, and y'all gonna bring something else back to the board, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I, I hate to put you on the spot, Mr. Cooper, but can we hear, is there a timeline? Can we, can we nail something down the next day or so on, on when that time, what that timeline will look like?
Uh, yes. Brittany, could you come up for a sec?
I hate to put you on the spot. I'm sorry.
So, I think our best bet's probably gonna be, like they had mentioned, the Public Facility Authority. So, the current Public Facility Authority is most of the board members here, I think, with the exception of the chairman. And so, we'll handle it sort of like we did with the fire station for bond. So, it would be a process where we'd have to meet with the Public Facility Authority. The board would have to then approve it after the Public Facility Authority, and then we would put it out there on the market for bond.
Commissioner Sanders.
I was just conversing with Commissioner Henderson. The Public Facility Authority is basically the Board of Commissioners.
Yes.
So, that would, that's gonna be a question as well, because we're gonna be having a separate meeting with the Public Facility Authority, which is the Board of Commissioners, and it comes back to the Board of Commissioners, which is the Board of Commissioners, again. So, that's another question we need to also talk about as well, is when is the Public Facility Authority gonna be turned back over to the, turned over to the citizens of Newton County? So, does it look like we're double voting on projects?
Anyone else? Anyone else?
We requested that this be on the agenda four months ago. We've been trying to get this worked out for over two years. They've been sitting in a room smaller than this area up here. At least allow us to go ahead and start the RFQ process. We cannot continue to push this down the road. We're having officers shot at. We're having EMS not being able to respond to things. We're having issues with fire trucks not being able to be responding on the way they need to be responded. We cannot continue to kick this down the curb. If this is not something that you all figure out that you can do, then the city is willing to go ahead and take 911 back and do it ourselves. And you all can run the Sheriff's Department and your fire department yourselves. Because we, we can't continue to do this. Our call volume is too high. Yours is too high. And they're risking their lives and their sanity. I mean, for her to have to handle HR problems in her car? I think that there ought to be a way that you all, with you sitting up here tonight, can make a decision about this. We've explained where the money's coming from. You don't have any problem spending money on splash pads. Get the 911 center. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Mayor. Please. Thank you for your response to this board. So, what I'd like to know is, what has the City of Covington currently done? If it's that important, what has the City of Covington done thus far to get this project done?
Thus far, what we've done, we've moved them into our fire station. We have not charged the county $60,000 a year like you all charged us when we were out there at Cousins.
Okay.
More?
Sure. Well, I wanna know everything that you all have done.
We have done everything possible to get them everything that they need. The building out there, every time there's been a problem, the City of Covington has fixed it. We have turned it on to our insurance when the pipes busted. We have had to replace the computers when that's happened. It is not a secure building. It is not up to Homeland Security standards. It's not up to GMA standards. We cannot continue to function like this. I don't want to be sanctioned by the state or the feds because we can't do what we're supposed to do with our 911 system. We had an officer shot in the face less than a year ago, and they were, the same crew was trying to handle that, that handled Officer Cooper in a room that was the size of a carport. We're gonna continue to see things going on and on. I have a radio. I listen to these calls. They're frightening. We can't put these people under this pressure. The average lifespan of a person working in a 911 center is about three years. We're not even able to hold on to them that long. I'm more concerned, this is your first line of defense for your people that are in the field and for your people at home. And when these people are at home and they're calling 911, these people need to be confident in what they're doing and where they are. And they're not confident if they're standing behind computers where they can reach out and touch somebody on either side of them. Plus, you're getting into the, to the security again, of people overhearing and the cross talking going on. If you haven't been out there and seen the conditions that they're working in, I really wish you would go out there and look at it. You wouldn't have the, the issue making this decision. It's, it's, it's just very imperative that we move forward with it. We can find the money. We can find the money.
And thank you for your response. And I, I don't, I, I just wanna make sure that we're not doing all we can to work together as a team. And I don't want it to be where the City of Covington is pointing fingers at the Board of Commissioners, or the Board of Commissioners is pointing fingers at the City of Covington. The objective is not to blame anyone or to make anyone look as if they're not doing their part. I think the objective of this meeting tonight is so that we can try to come together as a unit, as a team, to have the discussion, because this discussion hasn't been brought before the board until today. And so, what's been going on prior to today, I know I'm not privy of what is, what has happened prior to today. But, now that we're here, I think, let's move forward in a spirit of unity, and let's move forward in a spirit of cooperation and not try to make either board or either governmental entity look as if you're not trying to do anything, you don't care. Because I think this board, if I, if I can speak openly, I think this board does care about the 911 center. And it sounds like to me, it sounds like our Finance Director and our County Manager are diligently trying to work together to figure out what is the best option. You being a mayor of a city, understand that money can, you do wanna work that out. You don't wanna just say, hey, let's jump out and do something, and then you end up in the red because you didn't think through that process. And so, I think we do wanna make sure that we're not just jumping out there doing it. We're collectively working together, and we're not blaming anybody about you're not doing something. I think that's the goal of this meeting today, is we wanna work together, and we wanna make it happen. And so, I just wanna put that on record to make sure that everybody knows that it's not that this board doesn't wanna do anything. I think this board does, and that's what we are today. And so, let's take this meeting today and say, hey, this is the start of something great, where we can work towards having an amazing 911 building project. And we're gonna do everything we can, from the county perspective, from the City of Covington perspective, to work together, and let's make this a beautiful thing.
I agree. I'm just saying, let's don't continue to kick it down the road. Let's get it moving. Can we have permission, please, then, to get the RFQ?
So, Mr. Cooper, and then Commissioner Henderson.
So, here's what I would like to say. I, I think the one commonality in here, we understand the need. So, I'm gonna ask this board to, for myself and Brittany, an opportunity to come back and provide you all a comprehensive financial analysis from our perspective, and what that financial impact looks like at the next board meeting.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Two weeks.
Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Mayor Flea, a question I want to ask you. How fast... How fast do you think we should act? But first of all, you answered a question. If I'm not, if I'm not wrong, maybe you can correct me, the city of Covington budget is bigger than the board of commissioners' budget, if I'm not mistaken. And so you have the capability, the knowledge, and the, and the personnel, if we would allow y'all to move, to go ahead and make this happen. I mean, we don't want to wait another year, another month, another six months. We want to go ahead and make this happen, because I understand, I, I live here in Covington, and I understand what the needs are. And I understand that at this point right now in time, that who should lead on this project should be the city of Covington. So, you know, y'all, let's, let's work together for once, I think, in, in a long time, like we used to be. We all work together for a common goal, is, is to make it better for our citizens here in Newton County. Thank you.
It's just been extremely frustrating. Of, of all the projects that I've had to deal with since I've come into office, and that is the four years that I sat on the council and as the mayor, that this continues to be kicked down the curb. And I do not think that we have another single thing that is in the forefront that the city and county needs to be working on that's more important than this. And I feel like that we are putting our firemen, our paramedics, and our officers at risk every time that they have to have a meltdown because they can't get anything done in that, that room that they're in. And I don't understand why there is not more of an urgency from the county, especially with everything that goes on in the county.
So let me, let me, let me say this, because I want, want to make sure I take up for the commissioners as well. This is, this is, the commissioners, actually, their first time here in this. So they do need the opportunity to hear back from finance and hear back from the plan from Mr. Cooper. This is the first meeting that they are able to partake in any, any of this information. So the ask is of, I think, Mr. Cooper was to meet with Brittany and bring back something back before the board, and I think that's, that's, that's more than fair.
I, I, I understand that. I'm, I'm not asking for you to finance it tonight. I'm asking for permission to go out for the RFQ, just so that we can go ahead and start the ball rolling, and then you all can talk about the financing. And then if it's something that you all don't want to partake in, we've at least got a head start on what we need to do. We cannot continue to wait. That's all I'm asking, is permission to do the RFQ.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is for Patrick. Patrick, can we authorize a RFQ at this meeting here?
You would have to amend the agenda. This meeting was not, there was nothing published on the agenda for decision-making. You could amend the agenda if you're comfortable doing it with what information you've got. You could amend the agenda to add that and vote on it. If you're not comfortable, put it off to another meeting and make that decision then.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a RFQ proceeding on
Thank you.
It's been, it's been motion by Commissioner Cowan. Well, hold on. So, hold on. We, we, I guess we'll talk about it. It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan, and second, I think, by Commissioner Henderson, that we amend the agenda tonight. All in favor? Well, let's, let's.
It'll be in the, in the next motion.
Let's amend the agenda first. If, if it's approved to amend the agenda, all in favor to move the gen, amend the agenda. All right, pass as five oh. Now there's a, I need a motion, please. Add whatever you want to add to the agenda.
Well, that was a motion that.
No, it was a motion to amend.
Yeah, so.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, sir, to approve a RFQ for the 911 center.
You can. Now that the agenda's been amended, you can, yes.
It's been a motion made by Commissioner Cowan, and second by Commissioner Sanders. Now we're hoping for discussion. Go ahead, discussion. I think Commissioner. Commissioner Mason, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we just need to make sure that in the motion that we make, that that motion specifically states that the city of Covington will be the one moving forward with that RFP so that the record stands correct. So I just want to make sure that that motion states that, so it's not left up to say, oh, well, maybe the county is doing it, or the city is doing it, or, so we want to state in that motion exactly who's submitting that RFP.
Would you allow me to amend that quickly?
Sure, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
I'd like to make, to amend my motion to say the, allow an RFQ to be presented and perfo, performed or obtained by the city of Covington for a 911 center.
It's been motion that the city of Covington, I mean, by Commissioner Cowan, that the city of Covington will put out a RFP. It's been second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
I don't really have a discussion, but I do, I can't say I have visited the 911 center. That was one of the first places I went to. If those remember, when I came on board, I did a whole entire county tour. And I toured the entire county. I went to every director. I went to every facility. I actually sat in the seat and acted as a 911 operator. So I know exactly what they go through over there. I know it's very much cramped. So I understand why they're coming before us with this request.
Anyone else? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to thank Mayor Fleeter, call Fleeter, Mayor Fleeter for, for making a campaign promise and keeping it. You know, and it's very rare in this time, this time, for people to make a campaign promise and start acting on it and working on this fast. And I'd like to thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. C.
Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to say, Mr. Cooper and Brittany, thank you for your sense of urgency around this, and we look forward to hearing something at the next, at the me, next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Anyone else? All in favor? It passes five oh. Second motion that we adjourn, please. Motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? Stand adjourned. Thank you.